All right, we're going to start 90 seconds early. If you want to stand with me, let's have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this new day and for the change of the season, for the rain. We just thank you for this time of the year when we can all go to the polls and cast our vote, and we just pray for a good, strong turnout, that people will be able to exercise their right to vote. We thank you for this community, Lord. We thank you for the support that this community gives to the county through their taxes. We thank you for their trust in us, and we pray, Father, that we would be worthy of that trust, guide us through each and every agenda item today, that we would make the appropriate decision. We pray for the eradication of the COVID virus in our community, state, and in our country, and in fact, the entire world. We pray for the safety and well-being of our first responders in this community, for our servicewomen, servicemen, wherever they may be, that you would watch over them daily, keep them safe, bring them ultimately back home. We pray for our president, we pray for our national leadership and our state leadership, as well as our local leadership. We turn this meeting over to you now, in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone. We have a few guests in the audience that aren't typically here with us. We're glad to have you here, and we'll hear from each one who would like to have a moment to speak. I'm going to start off with public comment time. I've got Shirley Dickerson is one registered speaker, but if there's anyone else that has anything not on the agenda that you would like to address, this is your time to do that. So you can be thinking about that while I ask Shirley, come on up to the podium. Shirley's our chief appraiser, and I'm not sure why she's here. I hope it's good news.
Always.
Not always, but...
Good morning. And those that were looking at me, I was pretty surprised by my appearance. And on behalf of the board, I understand myself, I don't really like to take out all the important information that I'm here. And my recent appearance today, actually, could be a contact. And if you know, I think about 2011, and in part, it is a little bit of a long, it had requested more use of the technology. Like that, because we have a lot of other legal concerns. And we said, I think, we were too, along those, we built a conference room, we didn't matter a lot, because there's not a ton of leftover individuals that goes back to the, to act with. So we have health programs that we always run out of, and then we call out. And additionally, we had 20,000 people that, how they were able to do this, and we had 2,000, 4,000, and we're close to 2,400 by, so.
Right. Come any time.
Right.
Well, thank you for your diligence in working us through that luminous matter. I can't believe it's been that long now. But yeah, that was a long, drawn-out battle. Thank you for your, you know, efficient utilization of the monies that all the taxing entities give to you, and to get a refund back is typically unexpected, but we thank you very much, and thank you again for the job you're doing. And, you know, other than people like myself that don't like their property values going up, that's really the only thing I hear complaints about. So y'all are doing, yeah, no, seriously, y'all are doing something right down there, and every time I call down there, and I call down there from time to time for different reasons, I always get a quick courteous response, and that's even when they don't even know who I am. So thank you very much for managing a great crew and for the job that you do for our community. Thank you for the refund. All right, any other comments or questions for Shirley while she's here? All right, have a great week. Why don't you hand that to, yeah, there's Cheryl in the second row there. And come again any time. Before I do, before I do anything else, Sheriff, we're going to let you go ahead and speak. I've got Sheriff here on two items, number five and six, and he's got some things he needs to tend to, so I told him I would get him in and out as quickly as I could. Before I do that, was there anybody else that had something to say during public comment time? Don't want to cut you off. Anybody can speak on any of these agenda items? Okay, Sheriff, thank you. We're going to look at number five, consider and possibly approve a donation, and this looks like it's coming from First Christian Church, and they want to contribute about $2,375 to help you guys get some body cameras and an armored vest. What can you tell us about this?
Yeah, thanks for all the time. We were, 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 we were,[465.12]
So can you tell them anything else?
Thank you. Callie, what do you have to tell us?
Well, I just want to say this is really special for me. I grew up in 4H from age eight to eighteen, I was involved. And so
Thank you, sir.
Every year I would go to Commissioners Court with my county extension agents and share about my 4H experiences and what 4H meant to me growing up. And so it was a little bit different because my dad was my extension agent. And so I grew up in it. It was a really family oriented project. And I know these two Gibson kids, they have a great family support system. And I think that's what's so special about 4H is that the parents are so involved. And so I know their parents have worked really hard to get them involved in things and make sure that they have every opportunity possible to grow into great young people. And so it's been really neat to watch them this summer. And Achilles worked really hard with her pig flow and Trevor started the rabbits for his first time this year. And so it's really rewarding for me as an extension agent to watch these kids grow and develop and gain really good life skills. And so I know this was kind of hard for them today to come speak to you guys, but I know I'm super proud of them. So thank you guys for letting us come today.
Do they even teach sewing anywhere other than 4H? Is that even taught in school now?
You know, I don't even know. We have, I have tried to get a sewing group because I had like five leaders that wanted to teach quilting and, but I just didn't have anybody. And so this is the first year in three or four years that we've had sewing. So real excited. I mean, the parents are participating also. I mean, it's a, it was a little more than, I didn't realize we were going to do Parents Project too. So, but it's both.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks for the newsletters that you send. And thanks for continuing to push through the COVID. I know that's been a difficult thing, but we believe in what you do. Otherwise, we wouldn't continue to support you. And so thank you both very much. Thanks Gibson Kids. Appreciate you being here.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And if you all want to stay and listen to the rest of this meeting, you're welcome to. If you feel the need, these kids may be chomping at the bit to get back to school. They can go, you can go now. All right. Thank you very much for the cookies.
Yes, thank you.
All right, let's jump down to item number four. Report from Commissioners Regarding Roadwork Status. Bye bye. Y'all have a good day. Commissioner Fitch, you want to start?
Okay, of course, we are continuing mowing. We're just about done for the year. We get the Monticello area. Should be done with mowing for the year. And on County Road 2300, we've been doing some ditch work. And on 2500, we did, cleaned out some drainage areas by some bridges there and some soft spots that we'd filled in, we refilled those. And hopefully pave over them if it'll dry up. 1150, we did a lot of ditch work and pulled some of the edges. And we are starting to pave some of the real rough areas there. And we're covering up a spring that's going up a hill that we've been paving on. Get that ready for chip sealing next year or in the spring. And then we went, we helped Precinct One, two days, we did work on 1200 chip sealing.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Scher.
We've been, we're finished up last week with our mowing. Got all the tractors cleaned up and the mowers back, everything put back together and all. And have installed a few cover for some individuals that were either building houses or trying to get into their property or whatever. They've been doing some patching, quite a bit of patching. And we helped, helped a couple of days last week out at Precinct One on 1200 out there where they were doing that Lumina project they were doing out there. And also, I'd like to give a shout out to my guys. They took care of everything while I was off and quarantined. And I appreciate everything that they have done. Didn't, didn't have to worry about a thing the whole time that I was off. I'd talk to them every day and ask them if there's anything. Nope, we got it all covered. So I just want to give a shout out to them.
Commissioner Applewhite.
Well, we finished up on our mowing last week. And so we're through with the mowing and side cutting the rest of the year. We scabbed a few places on one on 1905, then the other end of 1905, we bladed it and put some wrap in the bad spots. It's trying to get it where people were going to go through there. And we scabbed over behind, between Maple Springs Church, where the spot's over there. And then helped Al in Precinct One, Chip Hill a couple of days. And it's starting to patch now.
Thank you. Commissioner Riddle.
We rebuilt a section of 1200, County Road 1200. Lumina paid the material and we furnished the labor about a mile and a quarter to a mile and a half. And that's been our project for a while. And then we've done the normal patching and cover some trees and mowing, but that's it.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll jump over five and six now to item number seven. Talking, continue talking about some roadwork needs. This is considering possibly approve the purchase of a steel wheel roller for Precinct Two. This is a $12,800 consideration. Commissioner Fitch is going to tell us more about what this is, why he needs it, and why this is a purchase that he ought to be allowed to make out of his budget.
Okay, when I did my budget, I didn't put any money in capital outlay because I was, I'm kind of waiting on our audit to how much money has going to roll over from last year and put some money in capital outlay for a couple of items that I may be trying to work on or improve this year. So one of the things I've been wanting is a double wheel, steel wheel roller. And I found this one at, in Lindell at Iron Ranch. It's a company that, they handle all kinds of heavy equipment and everything. It's a CB34, 9,000 pound Caterpillar roller and Caterpillar engine. It's a 2008 model. And so I went down and looked at it and it looked pretty solid. And I got Jeff to go with me and he looked at it and he felt like it was solid. And we, they were asking 14.5, I got them down to 12,800 on it. And I feel like we're getting a pretty good deal. It may need, you know, something minor goes wrong with it, I'll still be sitting good in it. We think it's pretty solid. We also contacted the previous owner, who was an equipment sales auction house in Buddha, Texas called Grande Equipment. And he remembered the equipment and said it was, it was a solid piece of equipment. He sold it a year ago to a contractor who wanted, I guess, do a job with it or something. So I think it'd be a good piece of equipment, be handy for our precinct to have. And then that'd give us two in the county in case the other big roller goes down, somebody needs one, we'll have an extra one. And it's in, I should be able to pay for that in my budget. And I just needed a budget amendment and y'all's approval. It's actually 12,800 even. The 24 or some type of a tax they put on, a invoice they sent me that we don't have to pay that. So it's tax, tax free.
You said this will be the second one in the county?
We have one Caterpillar, still has it. It's about 20,000 pounds.
It's in the pool.
It's in the, that we share. That's the shared piece of equipment. This will be actually just the precinct two piece of equipment. And
We leased one also.
Then they rented, rented one, yeah, they rented one this summer. That should free that one up between the other three. I'll have me one. And then when we get where we just, something broke down, we got those days where you got to have one. That'll be an extra one. I'd be glad to share, so.
Do we need two in the county?
I feel like I need one because I use it a lot for all kinds of jobs. And I have it right there ready instead of, you know, waiting when weather's permitting. So, yeah, I feel like it's a pretty common, nice piece of equipment to have.
This is a motorized vehicle, what I'd call, I'd look at it and call it a steamroller.
Yeah.
Not something that's towed behind. You actually start it and drive it.
And it's a size that's easy to carry on our bull trucks. Just drive it right up the ramp on our trailers and easy to transport around.
What does something like this cost new?
About 95,000, 90 to 95,000. The closest one I've seen in the used with around 5,000 hours on it, there's about $24,000, $25,000 range. So that's what raised my eyebrow about it at 14.5. So we checked it out. We feel like it's a good deal even if we had to put some money into it, which I don't think we're going to have to. It's pretty solid. We checked it out pretty good. So hopefully, it's used piece of equipment, hopefully we, we'll get us a good piece of equipment. Plus it's Caterpillar. It's a 2008 model. You can get all the parts for it. Where a lot of these steel wheel rollers and pneumatic rollers are brands that they don't make anymore. It's kind of hard to find parts for, so.
What year model?
2008.
How many hours on it, John?
55, 5400, 5500 hours, so. And everything works on water, all the switches, everything is, it's been serviced with Caterpillar filters. And that was a good sign too, so.
All right. You have, you do not have any capital item budget money in your current budget? So you propose to shuffle from another account? How do you plan to do this?
I probably just shuffle it from my road oil, probably for now. We'll just see what, that's probably something I can take it from that has the most money in it for now. And then I'll replace that when I do that. When we get our audit and we do our rollover money from last year, what we didn't spend, I'll replace that back in road oil and probably have a line item for capital outlay in the future. I wouldn't mind possibly finding me a used broom like we have, sweeper. But it'd have to be a nice one. Our sweeper's pretty relatively easy to get a hands on it when we need it, so.
All right. Any questions, comments for Commissioner Fitch? Okay, he would obviously like your approval.
I'll make the motion we approve it.
Motion to approve this purchase for Precinct Two is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second Commissioner Fitch. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Item number eight, it is time for our annual purchase of a truck chassis for one of our volunteer fire departments. And this year, the recipient will be Tri Lakes. And so Chief Ward, anything you want to tell us here?
When I come up last time, we discussed it and it was approved to go ahead and get that truck for 36,000, Miss Barbara told me. And then at that time, we also brought up that we was in line to receive a grant from the Texas Forestry Service for a truck. And that's a 90, 10 share. Since then, we have received that grant from the Texas Forestry Service. So we got to looking at brush trucks and the cheapest one we're finding is 100, 110,000. And that's just like very minimum truck, ready to go. We have found a truck, it's in Lindell. This truck is a, it's considered under three different vehicle. It's a mini pumper, it's a grass truck, a rescue truck. I bought y'all some pictures.
Simplify this for me and anybody else. We're talking about something different than this truck on here, right?
So, kind of. What we want to do is, is take the 36,000 and apply it to this truck. And then also the 10,000 that we discussed on the grant, the 90 share, and then add it to this truck. So we can actually purchase this truck with the county helping out at 46,000.
Okay, what, you kind of lost me there. What is, tell me how much the grant is?
The grant's 100,000.
The grant is 100,000?
The Texas Forestry Service does 90% of that.
Okay, and that's to, that's not providing you with the truck? That's giving you money for the purchase of a truck? So what we, what we were, we usually spend about 36,000 for these truck chassis. What is it that we're buying that's going to be this much bigger number?
Well, the 36,000 for, like, we was going to buy the cabin chassis. And then the 10,000 that was going to be asked for the grant truck. If we combine them together, that'd be the Texas Forestry Service at 90,000, Titus County at 46,000, Tri Lakes at 2,000. It's a total of 138 for the truck.
This is two different trucks?
No, one truck.
I'm sorry, I'm still.
Instead of the one, he wants to put the money on the other truck. Instead of cabin chassis, he wants to put it towards the truck he's talking.
Yeah, to the truck that's ready to go.
Is this a similar, bigger, better truck or something totally different?
Normal, there's pictures.
No, you just explain it. You can do without this truck that we normally buy one a year for the departments?
What we're saying is to take the money, add it to, combine the two and purchase a truck that you would like. This is also, like I said, a grass truck. Pictures show the pump, hose, everything, everything.
So a truck that will handle the job that we would normally expect of this truck, chest, truck and chassis that we would, were originally considering buying, this one will do more than that and more? And so we're looking, we're looking at 130, 100,000 dollar truck here?
Well, it was, when we first priced it out, they wanted 155. And then we got them down to 138. That's the lowest they'd go on it.
Is it brand new?
Brand new, it's 2020 model. I've done, talked to Guaranty Bond Bank. They'll do the 138,000 dollar loan for 90 days. The truck is built, ready to go, and it's in La Grange. All we got to do is go down, pay them, pick it up, bring it back home. So like I said, we're asking the county just to combine the cabin chassis money and then the 10,000 grant money together. Would be a total of 46,000. So we're not having to buy a cabin chassis, put the bed on it, do all this work to it. This one here is ready to go. We get back, we put our stuff on it. Then we take brush 41, take everything off it, then that one there goes to the county.
If we had approved the 36,000 purchase, that gets you a cab and a empty frame?
Right.
And what, what would you normally do with that?
Well, we'd have to buy it, take it back, we'd have to buy a bed and put on it and put the skid unit on it. Put all the tools on radios, lights.
And do, do you have that stuff or you would have had to buy it?
We'd have to buy it. Some of the tools we have, but as far as the lights, sirens and all that stuff, we'd have to purchase it. Because the truck will turn into the county. I don't want to take the lights off of it because if I do, we're going to have holes in it and wires hanging everywhere and stuff like that. It's, this is a whole lot more truck that's ready to go than just buying a cabin chassis.
And 90,000 of it's coming from Forestry Service?
Right.
So for 90,000 of their dollars and 46,000 of our money?
And 2,000 of our money.
Okay, this is what you get.
And then it's equipped, it's ready to go. All we got to do is put a radio in it, put our equipment on it, truck being serviced.
When's the last time we had a successful grant award for anybody that you can remember?
Forestry?
Yeah.
Or our department?
No, any, any of our departments. It just seems like it's been a while since we've had somebody.
Five Star just got one on a tanker. Our tanker, 2010, I believe it was.
Yeah.
2010, 2011 is when the grants come out.
It's been, been several years since we have.
When I submitted this grant for a small brush truck, it was in 12. And we just now got it.
Okay.
And if we do purchase this truck, when we get it back here, the Texas Forestry Service will come out. They got to do an inspection on it, make sure it meets all requirements for them, which it does. And we could have the truck serviced. If this is approved, then we'll probably go down and pick it up Monday. I got 90 days to pay the loan off. And we have it serviced probably a week, two weeks.
And you expect it takes about 90 days to get that grant money from the state?
Oh, the Forestry Service, if, if, I talked to Kevin Matthews. As soon as we get the truck back, I call him and he'll come out, he'll set a time to come out and do the inspection on it. So they do the inspection on it, then we take the grant money. I got to show them where y'all done the 30, or 46,000, then show them where the bank done it. And then send them the paperwork on it. Takes about two and a half, three weeks to get the check. And we'll be done with it.
You're just getting this guarantee loan just for 90 days, just to be sure you have enough time to actually get that money in from the Forestry Service?
Mr. Ralodaner told me, he said that if you ain't got it done 90 days, don't worry about it. Just let me know. We have financed everything we've ever bought from them down there. Our fire agent, we just bought it in Dallas two years ago. We paid 379 dollars a month on it, except for our station. We bought some air packs a couple of years ago. We went to the bank, we financed that, paid that loan off. Our building, we was out there, I think, last year. We done to add on our building, paid that note off. So we, we stand pretty good with the bank. He was real willing to do it.
But you expect to be able to pay it all off here in 90 days? Set the target?
Yeah. Yeah, it should be all taken care of in 90 days. It shouldn't be a problem. Because usually on a truck, like our tankers, we had to order them. And you're looking at the 90 days to 120 days to get them built. This one here is already ready to go. All I got to do is go down and write the man a check, pick it up and drive it home. Send us the check, clear it to the bank. They'll send us the title and stuff to it. We'll go down and register it, get Kevin and them come out and do the inspection on it. And then probably three, four weeks, we'll have our check. We're down and pay the bank off and we'll be sitting good.
Did you have a question?
The old truck, you're not going to use the equipment all of it? Usually we get, I guess, if I, let me make sure I'm understanding it right. We, when we get a new truck normally, we keep the pump and tank and so forth and, or whatever, and put it on the new chassis. All we get is a cabin chassis. Now what are you going to do with that cab and chassis and that truck? This is just going to be surplus?
The cab, the truck we're going to give up is going to be the cab with a bed on it. The skid unit that's on it.
Will you go ahead and go back to the mic, Jerry?
It's old. We really need to.
It don't really need to go on a brand new truck. We figure we just pull it off before we give the truck to the county. Or lest the county thinks they can use that pump on there, I don't know.
You don't really have a use for it? Do we have another department that might be willing to buy it at a?
I'd give it to another department if they come up and say they needed it. But the truck and the bed is supposed to go to the county. And then the skid unit, if another department need it, far as I'm concerned, they could have it.
Five Star needs or wants another truck. But I don't know exactly the specifications, what they really do want, but.
Well, the truck we're giving up to the county, it's a 99. I think it's got like 10,000 miles on it. We change oil on it twice a year. You know, it's got new tires on it. The skid unit's a little bit on the old side, but it's still plump, it still works. So that'd be totally up to y'all on that part of it.
Well, the county, the county could use it as far as I'm concerned. Like Precinct Three, took one of those trucks and put the dump bed on it for a patching truck. And we need one of those desperately. We got, we're using a 1995 Ford One. And we could use a, if we get chassis, Precinct One could use them very much. But I don't, I don't have any idea what Precinct Five Star is needing.
What are your thoughts on this?
I don't know. I don't know what to think about it. We are. My, my thought honestly is we've added a million dollars to pay the city fire department to help us out. And I, and of course, I don't agree with that. I think that was a foolish, what we're throwing at them. But there's a, this is a, and then we're pumping up and beefing up our volunteers again, which I think is what we should do, start with. But since we've already spent that money to the city, I think it's, it bothers me a great deal. Of course, y'all all know how I feel. I think we need a county fire department. I think we could do it a heck of a lot cheaper and a lot more efficient. And these guys could do it, even by hiring some full-time county firemen. But anyway, I'm in a minority there, as we well know. So that's how I feel about it. I don't have any objections to getting a better truck.
Do you support this purchase?
Yes.
Are you okay with taking? Barbara, we take 10,000 out of contingency? Is that? Questions, Commissioners? How do y'all feel about this? Been a while since we've gotten a grant. It's nice to get 90,000 dollars worth of value.
It's a good beefed up truck and they're, they're basically taking their money and replacing it with a really fancy truck that's already ready to go with some rescue on it and has extra pumper space on it and everything. It's a little bigger truck. So with the grant, really makes it a sweet deal and we still get our truck back. And then we'll just decide amongst ourselves who needs that truck the most and, or Five Star needs it. I understand Five Star just got a grant too. And it's a little bigger than this grant for a certain kind of truck. So I'm sure we'll hear from them, tanker truck or something in the future, so. That's a good deal. They got those grants, so I'm all for it.
Barbara, do we, if we're going to take that 10 out of contingency, can we do that based on what this agenda item was? Or can, do we need to, do we need to delay that until another meeting for approval? Because we've really kind of changed up what the essence of this agenda item was.
I think that's a true discretion, Judge Lee, but this does not mention anything other than the grass, the grass truck.
Okay, well, we didn't.
But, you know, we don't want to make it a difficulty for them, maybe, I don't know, we can hold that truck. I mean, it sounds like to me that there may be other agencies who want to buy this truck. So I'm sure there's a lot of 2020s left, similar to the sheriff's problem. So I, we want to wait two weeks as long as I have.
Okay.
But that's a big, a true discretion.
All right, well then, what we would be asking for here, one, is to grant them the money that we had budgeted, which was 36,000, to grant them an additional 10,000, which is not in the budget and is not in this agenda item. But it is a match for a grant. And typically, what the county has done in years past, and this has always been, as long as I've been in office, our policy, we never budgeted grant matches from the forestry service because we never knew when they were going to be awarded. And so rather than just always having that item in the budget time after time, we just decided that we would find that money in contingency if and when a grant is awarded. And so we have that situation here. So you understand we're going to take the 36 we already had budgeted, ask for another 10,000 from contingency to honor this match and thereby give Tri Lakes more than we were originally talking about. And we update our fleet as far as the beds. Those beds have limited life. You can't just keep rolling them forward every time you buy a new truck, putting old equipment onto a new truck time after time. So here's a chance to. So here's a chance to make a nice 2021 upgrade to all that equipment that sits on the back of this truck. So if you all are comfortable, those are the different things to consider in this.
I make a motion that we do the grant and give them their 36.
Okay.
So they can.
So your motion is to allow them to spend the $36,000 that was budgeted for a grass truck chassis, and then on top of that, give them $10,000 as a budget amendment from contingency fund to enable them to buy a bigger and better and newer truck, along with fully equipped equipment for that vehicle?
Yes.
That's the motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. All in favor, or any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations on your grant, and hopefully you get that loan paid back quickly, and go ahead and get that thing bought before somebody else snatches it, I suppose.
Appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
All right, item number nine, this is one of our routine annual items where the county authorizes me to enter into the Texas Indigent Defense Commission 2021 Formula Grant. And basically, what we are doing here is, of course, we don't want to turn down indigent defense monies that the state is offering, but what we are doing with this resolution is, we are saying, we understand the rules by which we must play by if we are going to accept money from the state. And this is money that helps us offset indigent defense expense. And where this comes from is, we have many, many defendants that come through court that are not able to provide their own attorney, and we are required by law to provide an attorney for them. And this is monies that helps us offset that expense. It doesn't pay for all of it, it pays for a portion of it. But by approving this resolution, again, we say we accept the money, we agree to spend it according to your stipulations, and we've done it year after year, and I certainly want you to do it again, because that's monies that are yet to be determined how much that is. It could be as little as $15,000, it could be as much as mid $30,000 or even more. It's always, it changes each year, and we don't know exactly how much that will be. So we do need to take everything we can get to help us offset indigent defense expenses.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Parker approves this item to participate in the 2021 Indigent Defense Grant Program.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fitch, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye, thank you. Item number 10, we have another entity that is an approved purchasing cooperative by the name of Sourcewell. And Sourcewell just gives us one more avenue that we can use when we purchase any number of things. These are pre-approved vendors. When you make a purchase through Sourcewell, you are satisfying the law requiring that you go through the bid process. This has already been done by the appropriate entities. So Sourcewell is one of about, I guess, about three or four of these entities that, Buy Board is another one. So this is going to be similar to Buy Board, maybe they have different type products that they sell. It's not going to cost us anything for us to join up with Sourcewell. So I would ask that you approve utilizing Sourcewell as just one more of our purchasing cooperatives.
Brian, do they have the payback like Buy Board does?
Don't know anything about Sourcewell, and so when you're making a purchase, that's something that you would want to consider, but this just gives you one more opportunity. It certainly doesn't restrict you in any of your purchases anywhere else. There's no obligation here. It's just, again, signing up to be one of the participants in this group buying effort.
I make a motion, we approve it.
Motion to utilize Sourcewell as another purchasing cooperative, as motion is made by Commissioner Parker. Second by Commissioner Fitch, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, that time of the year, as we approach the end of the year, to approve holidays for 2021, we'll look at holiday approval before we approve the schedule for our Commissioners' Court meeting. So you should have those in front of you, but I'm going to read these off. We've not added any holidays here. We're keeping status quo. So this would be effective, this group of dates would start January 1, which is a Friday of this year, this new coming year, 2021. So New Year's Day, January 1, Friday, Martin Luther King Day, Monday, January 18, President's Day, Monday, February 15, Good Friday, Friday, April 2, Memorial Day, Monday, May 31, Independence Day, Monday, July 5, Labor Day, Monday, September 6, Columbus Day, Monday, October 11, Veterans Day, Thursday, November 11, Thanksgiving week, Thursday and Friday, November 25 and 26, Christmas Eve, Friday, November 24, and Christmas Day, Monday, December 27. So that is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, which is the same as it's been for several years.
Make a motion, approve the holiday.
Motion to approve the 2021 holiday schedule is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item, number 11, excuse me, number 12, is to approve Commissioners' Court schedule also for the calendar year 2021. And this is one of those years where only one holiday affected us as far as having to rearrange our court schedule from a, I'm sorry, two days, from a Monday back to a Friday. One of those would be October the 8th. That is a Friday instead of the Monday holiday on the 11th. And again, that was Columbus Day, yeah, Columbus Day. And then that would also affect the Christmas holidays a year from now. We would bump back Commissioners' Court to a Thursday, because we have Christmas on the weekend, and we've proposed a holiday of Friday and Monday. So instead of backing Monday's meeting back to Friday, we're actually backing it up to Thursday. Other than that, every day is a Monday holiday, excuse me, is a Monday meeting day with the exception of October 8 on Friday, and a Thursday meeting on December 23 of 2021.
Make that motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite to approve this schedule. Commissioner Riddle, have a question?
Yes. I feel very strongly we should have these meetings at 6:00 or 6:30 at night, all of a Commissioners' meeting. I feel, I've made this case before, and I don't know how to explain it, but we did it for one year.
No, we did it for two years.
And then y'all come back and said it wasn't any difference. I have all the records, we had a lot more people at night, and we would have had more. And the only reason we had the people at daytime was because it was vendors, and they were scheduled to come in at vendor. We didn't tell them they should come at night. So that we took care of them, accommodated them, and I feel like the citizens would be a lot better served if they could come to the meeting at night. I don't like to come to meetings at night, but all these meetings should be done in the evening, not at 9:00 on a Monday morning. It's like we're trying to keep a secret, and I think we probably do, from the taxpayers. And I think they're getting rooked by not having meetings that they can attend if they want to.
Okay. This also does state in here, Commissioners' Court is made at 9:00 a.m. So that's also, we want to decide on times as a part of this schedule, as well as these days and dates. And Commissioner Riddle is making a motion. Are you approving these days as well?
I approve those days as well. I just think that we should have the meeting.
The motion is to approve this schedule as listed with all meetings at what time?
6:00 or 6:30.
Which one?
6:30.
6:30 p.m.
Yes.
All right, that is the motion.
Yes.
All right, any seconds on that? If not, and you have another motions you would like to make, but again, that is the motion. All right, that motion does not have a second. I'll entertain any other motions.
Make a motion, we approve the schedule with daytime meetings.
Already have a motion by Dana?
Dana had already made a motion to approve it.
Thank you for telling me. I guess I didn't think about that.
Make a second for Dana.
Okay, so we've got to decide on the first one before we can even consider the second one? Yes, that's true. Okay, will you restate what yours, since you made the motion first, will you restate your motion?
Make a motion, we'll make it for 9:00 on Mondays.
According to this day and date schedule?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Since that was the first motion, that motion is now on the floor.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Questions, comments? All right, motion has a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
So we have opposition there. All right, thank you. We are down to item 13, approve oral and written reports of county officials. Barbara has sent these to you in advance.
Make a motion, we approve oral and written reports.
Motion for approval is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 14 is our treasurer's report. Cheryl has provided you with a copy of that as well.
Make a motion, we approve.
Motion to approve Cheryl's treasurer report. Second. Second by Commissioner Fitch, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 15, budget amendments. I did not see any, and that stays the same. There are no budget amendments for today's meeting. Therefore, we'll take no action. We'll jump to item number 16, approve pay orders and payments of our bills.
Make a motion, we pay our bills.
Motion to do so, made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch, all in favor, say aye. I'm handing you the report from Barbara, the report from Cheryl, for your signatures. We did vote on that, right? Yes. Item number 17, closing comments, if any. I'll begin. Let me just give you an brief update on voting, early voting, a three-week process this year. We are in the final week of early voting. We have had a tremendous turnout. We have had an especially smooth early vote this year. In the first week, we surpassed four years ago, 2016, which, if you will recall, I think we were using, you know, in the past, we used two different locations, Trinity Baptist Church and at our usual location here at the Elections Office. And we surpassed through this one location here what we had done in both of those locations previously. So we're setting records this year as far as early vote. I'm quite sure we'll set a significant record of total turnout, but an especially large turnout of early voting. I don't know what kind of percentage it will be of the total vote, but three weeks of that in there. Pam and her staff have done an outstanding job. You've seen the window that she had installed over there in her office to slightly modify the process. Hopefully, you all have voted. If you haven't, even on busy days, the process was smooth, with minimal wait. The election workers have specifically told me, just one-on-one, what a pleasant process it had been for them this year. So I'm very proud of our Elections Office, Pam, and, hold on, I already, Debbie. And Debbie have done a great job over there, and all of their volunteers, as well as their paid workers, have really made this a smooth process this year. Early voting will end Friday. Thursday and Friday, you can vote until 7:00 p.m. Today, tomorrow, and Wednesday, it stops at 5:00. But we give you expanded hours this Thursday and Friday. And if it's going to be as strong of a voting day as I think it will be, you will serve yourself well by going ahead and getting your early voting done so that you're not risking any problems come Tuesday of next week. All right, COVID testing is still available at no cost at the Exxon Station across from the Jalapeno Tree Restaurant. They have told me that if the reduced number of people continues, they will no longer be able to keep the doors open, as it were, for that free testing. I would bet that once that free testing is over, it probably will not come back. So I'm not encouraging you just go out and waste time and money going and getting a test, but if you know people that need to be tested, for whatever reason, here is an opportunity to get tested without any symptoms whatsoever, at no cost, no charge to your insurance, paid for by the state of Texas. So one location only, and they are six days a week, Monday through Saturday. Testing is, excuse me, number of confirmed cases, we've seen a slight uptick in this past week. We don't get numbers over the weekend, so I'm hoping that today's numbers will not be as strong as last week's were, but we have seen a slight uptick. This is the time of the year when there's lots of other sicknesses that are going around, and people are starting to go to the doctor, so there's more demand at our doctors' offices and at the hospital, but not necessarily COVID. The hospital is continuing to keep relatively low numbers. I don't think there was anybody on a ventilator last week, so that's good news. Commissioner Riddle?
None.
Commissioner Applewhite?
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you and to all the kids that participated in the fair and done some good job, and just wish it would have been different, but they've done a great job.
The modified fair, the livestock show, really is what it was.
Right.
Commissioner Fitch?
I've got some follow-up on that road grant that we applied and got for the state. The delay has been employee changes in Atlanta office, and so they got back with me, and we need to turn in a project for next year. And so I'm doing this on my computer spreadsheet and turning the figures. So the way it's done is, we're going to need a schedule of when you're going to do this work. So I'm going to put the schedule in, it's May 1 to September 30. That'll give us all summer. Then you pick a project you want to do. I would recommend chip sealing, because we can both, each precinct could do just two miles of chip sealing, and that would meet our $49,000 requirement, which is the 46/6 that they're going to pay, plus our $5,000 apiece that we're chipping in. These figures are based off TechDOT's yearly average figures for chip sealing, which is like $26,000 a mile. So if you know a road that you're going to put down that you want to chip seal next year, then you need to let me year, then you need to let me know the road we're going to do and how long you're going to do on how many miles it's going to be. So I need at least two miles. So you can put several roads down, just turn them into me. I'll turn those projects in. We'll put down the window from May 1st through September 30th. Also, the receipts for those jobs that you're going to do, so you're not going to do chip sealing, so you're going to just repave a road or something. You start saving those receipts May 1st through you're done with the job or September 30th and turn those receipts into me. Me and Barbara will keep up with them and I'll record them and I have to give reports every month to the state on this and I'll turn those in for you. So basically, the way I'm going to do it, I have two receipts. I'll have road oil from Ergon, CRS 2. Then I'll have my gravel that I'm going to choose and we'll turn those receipts in. They'll have your miles and your project. If you change roads, just let me know. I'll turn it into them. They'll let you use whatever road you want to. And then in October next year, I'll get with the Atlanta office, it'll probably be Kim Garner, she'll come down. We'll go look at the roads and she'll sign it off and then the state will pay us our, our funds, which is $173,400.
Have they changed the rules on this?
Yes, it hasn't never been this complicated before.
I'm so confused.
Usually, they would just, we turn it in, they sent the money earlier. Like, and it was bigger figures than that. There were some precincts getting $300,000 on that last grant here for Tyus County. So this is just a lot of, a lot more steps in it.
Well, this is the one that you submitted 90 days ago.
Yes, so when we, we turned that in 90 days ago, they had 30 days to reply back to us. We got your stuff, give us your, now our next step for us was turn in these projects. And the lady changed jobs or something. And when she left, she didn't tell anybody anything, so we're waiting for the word. Nobody knew nothing about it, so everybody just got put on hold. And it was in the middle of COVID also, so people were working for hold.
We were kind of expecting that money by now.
So when I go back to check on it, what's going on? Well, we need to turn in our road projects by November 10th. So we have till November 10th and that'll give me a couple of days to process it, add it up, send it to them. When they say everything's on go, which should be for sure, we'll have it worked out by May 1st, and then we'll have those projects. We can change the projects at any time, but then they won't send us our monies till after they have approved all these projects. About eight miles of chip sealing, they come look at it, you're good to go. And they'll send us our full check and then we'll get that in the office and divide that up into each one of us, our accounts. So, yeah, it's pretty complicated.
Have you already provided them a list of projects?
No. We were supposed to hear back from them once we signed that letter of resolution.
So we never gave them an actual list? We knew what those projects were going to be?
No, I turned in projects to show, yeah, we were going to do some chip sealing, some of the roads we had, we already got them fixed now, so we'll have new projects.
Is Atlanta, are other counties not part of the Atlanta group, already getting their money?
Yes, 15 counties, I think, in that.
But are other counties that are not home-based in Atlanta, are they already getting their money?
No, no. They're just turning in projects like we are and then they're on hold till they finish the project. So most of these projects will be done next summer anyway, so most, nobody's probably going to get paid till next fall, a year from now.
Okay, so you need some road projects later than when?
Road projects. I need them by November 10th. You just call me like I'm going to do, we'll chip seal 2,300, 1.8 miles of road, we'll chip seal 1030, 1045, whatever, give me your road and the length of it and the width of the road. That was for a average 20-foot wide road.
Yeah, if you know you've got a project for next spring, list it. It's not going to hurt us to go higher than we know we're going to get.
No, it's best to go higher and then we'll also be able to change it at any time. So, but be in mind, starting May 1st, they need to know what roads we're working on. Even if we change it after May, we're going to have to keep up with those receipts and give copies and I'll turn it in on these reports I turn in once a month, so.
Okay, so before the next Commissioner's Court meeting, you need to have your road projects-
I need it by November 10th because I have to put it all in, make sure everything's right with them in Atlanta, and they have to have it by, they turn it in November 15th, so.
Why don't we target for a week from today to have that?
That'd be great. A week from today.
Just so we leave ourselves some cushion.
Yeah, be thinking of some roads you want to chip seal, it's pretty simple.
Questions, contact Commissioner Fitch. Let's get every dollar coming to us. Sorry for the delay.
Okay. The next thing I was going to tell you about is a new federal law. We've been talking about this amongst everybody about the CDL drivers, that they have a new drug and alcohol clearinghouse that the federal government has made up. So I've talked to Texas Association of Counties about this. I've looked at their website and it is a new federal requirement for employers in the state of Texas, so we're included in that, that it's an extra check when you hire new employees. But what we're going to be doing when we start this, we need to do it by January 1st, is we'll have everybody sign up in the program. It's online, it's free. They go in, they can do it on their phone, they register theirselves, and it does a little background check, just a red light, green light, that their record is clear. And then we will have to do, I talked to TAC about it, we'll have to do new hires that have been here less than two years for the next two years, so two more times. And then from now on, anybody that gets hired new that has a CDL, if they're going to use that CDL in their job, then they have to be checked on that clearinghouse. And what it does, it just, it doesn't give you a drug test or anything or put you in a pool of drug tests. All it does, if there's any information on your driving record for drug and alcohol abuse that hadn't been cleared up, that you didn't pay your fines or go to probation or whatever, it will show up a little red light on there that they need to get those issues tended to before they can drive using their CDL for the county. Of course, they could be hired with a CDL and be a police officer or something, whatever. I mean, we're not checking it for that, but we're going to check it for our road crews. And as far as I know, it's something we're going to have to do. Every year, I'll have to check, the ones I check through the year cost a dollar and 25 cents for me to go on there as the county. All I do is put their driver's license in there and it gives me a red light, green light if they have anything on their record just pertaining to drugs and alcohol.
How do you pay for it?
I guess when you get that far, it's going to ask for a credit card or something because it's their website, it's a federal government website. I guess I'll pay for the credit card. I never had, I hadn't run one to, to pay to, to do it, to know.
Let me know what that web, every one of those rules and regulations you're talking about are for federal motor carriers. It says on that regulation that you're talking about, it don't say employers, it says federal motor carriers.
I know it, it's through the federal motor carrier.
If the county, and I'm sure how, that's the reason we've increased spending 35% in the last seven years. Stuff like this, we don't need that. We're not one of those people. That's for federal motor carriers, that's for professional truck drivers and companies, and they got to make reports. And you look at that regulation again, it says FMSCA, federal motor carrier.
It is through the federal motor carrier.
That company that set this out and TAC has created this department, I don't know how many people they've added in the last 10 years.
Well, is it not good information to have for a doctor?
No, no, it's information, if people apply for a CDL driver license for a motor carrier, they would get too many tickets or fail to take a drug test in Texas, so they'd go to Arkansas and apply for a CDL and not ever tell them that they failed a drug test.
Yeah, that's why the federal motor carrier is involved in it, but the actual website that we're going to be using is not federal motor carrier. It is the Drug and Alcohol Clearinghouse. I'll show it to you. It's a federal website and it is a federal law that anybody with CDL working for somebody had to be on there.
What's the negative of doing it?
The cost.
A dollar?
$1.25.
Oh, that's not, that's not it. You wait, you read the clear, you read the fine print. It's going to be $2 every time a drug test, they investigate one, there'll be a charge. That's a service. That's a service that Barbara has, it's a, they're paid, just like Jimmy knows one at Houston.
Well, this doesn't do anything with drug testing at all.
We can do it with somebody local, we don't have to use that one.
Yeah, we brought up the drug testing before, it's a totally different, so this is non, this is not drug, this is just driver records, United States-wide, it's driving records that are checked. One thing about it right now, Al, all the states that are supposed to turn in all their info, nobody's turned anything in yet. It doesn't even have any info on anybody just yet, but through the years, it will be, have more information on people's driving records, especially out of state. And it's mainly for new hires. We may not even have to do it once every year or two, pay the $1.25.
All I can tell you, you're dead wrong. You don't understand it, I'm gone.
I'm just bringing it up.
You guys love to spend money, just waste it.
We're not acting on anything. In fact, the $1.25, I thought if I'm going to be doing this, the $1.25, I just pay for it myself and go on.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What if we have a guy that moves to Texas from California and wants to come to work for the county and we want to check him?
Okay.
My understanding of this is it gives us insight into his past history. So what, what am I missing here? I thought this was a good thing.
Well, it's, it is, we as a company, our employer, we have to check, we're required, if he has a CDL, to give him a drug test. And if he don't take it, we don't hire him. If he fails-
But what if he's clean, but he had a drug problem six months ago? Or he's got three DWIs from out of state?
He's got to go get another drug, I mean, he takes a drug test here, if he passes it, you don't know that. We don't know that.
What if I want to know it? I want to know what this guy's history in California was.
If, these people will look it up for you, or you can call the other states. There is not a database of the feds that has this information.
That's what this is. They're just starting it. January 1st, it will start.
It says for federal motor carriers. It doesn't say for employers.
But you didn't answer my question. If I wanted to know the driving history and the legal history of a guy that moves here from out of state, why would checking his name on a national database not be a good thing for us?
They don't have a national database. The only thing you can do now, you can check his driver's license. You're required, a federal motor carrier is required, we're not required, to send off to like five companies his driving records. Every company he's worked for, we're required to, a federal motor carrier. Now, I was a federal motor carrier for 28 years, my own, and I have to report that. And when the DPS audited me, they'll check that to see if you reported it. So you're going to have record that you sent off his past employers, and if one of them, a lot of times, they don't answer them. But you'll get one back that says that he got, he failed, he was left here because of a drug test. But everybody's been sued so much, they're afraid, that information you get back from previous employers, they're afraid to put on their, you know, he sexually harassed somebody or, you know, said something, they won't hardly put anything on the things and you get them back.
Why does participating in this not help us to get information like that?
I don't see why participating in it would be the thing, but I'm telling you, that company is a private company, just like the one, there's a charge for it, and they're going to check all the states for you and find out if you want to do it, but you can check all the states. We can send a requirement to the states.
But if it's going to cost me $1.25, why not let them do it?
It don't cost you $1.25. It don't cost anything. We get, and the drug test, they're going to tell you when your drug tested due, but the state of Texas now tells you, you'll get a letter. If you've got a CDL, you'll get a letter, it's time for a physical or your CDL will be expired.
That's not what I'm asking. I want to know a guy's previous history with the law from another state that I might not have access to.
I understand, I understand where you come from. I'm not going to be a commissioner for two more months. And it's a waste of money, it's federal, federal motor carriers are required to do this, and we can do anything we want to in the House. But we don't have to do this and send our records to ABC Company, this is called Clearing House something, this information that Barbara sent to me. And that's what it is. And if you want to pay somebody, let's do it. We waste money every day around here, so why not just take care of it?
I can't get an answer to my question.
No, well, you, I don't know what you want me to say.
Well, I've got some more info coming, that's why I just brought it up. We're still investigating it.
What method do I have of checking the criminal history and driving history of somebody that comes in, in my example, from California, that wants to work here for the county? What way do I have?
I would check him out if I hired a truck driver.
How would you do it?
A lot of ways. You call, you can check out his previous employers, number one, and then you start checking the records and if you can, it's pretty easy to do it. And you can check if he's had a CDL, if he'll tell you what state it, if you're going to talk to it, he has to give you his driver's license.
But what if he lies to me?
Huh?
What if he's lying to me?
Well, he has to give you the license number, you've got a copy of his license from that state. And if you don't have it, you don't hire it, but you, I would hire him and I, you'll get a copy back of the state of California if he has a ticket. It just depends on how much you want to, want to pre-check people.
Okay.
And if you want to hire somebody to do it, and that's what you're doing, if you sign up with these people, and that's what you want to do it, but that's, I understand.
I don't.
I will, I've got some guidelines from TAC that are going to email me about, like I said, that two-year, do it for two years, but then after two years, we just do it for every new hire and sign them up, check their record. And really, it shouldn't, if they do it in front of you, right there and show you the result on their phone when they register, that's not going to cost us anything. Sign up is free, I did it myself. It just gives you green light, red light, green light, you're good. So I'll get the laws printed that go into effect January 1st and make sure and show you. Also, for risk management, our insurance companies are wanting us to, to do this, so.
Who, who, risk management?
Yeah, for, for vehicle insurance and all that through TAC and all, they recommend doing it. Of course, it's, now it's a new law, so.
I got it, I got it.
Let me find some more answers for you, Mr. Riddle. I just brought it up today because I'm still checking into it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Let's move on and make a motion to adjourn.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Motion to adjourn, Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.